We, I will notice we have a couple of board members who will be joining us virtually, that is in keeping with board policy. So long as it's announced in advance, they are able to vote as well. And so we have a full board, we may have one more board member joining virtually as well.
I think Katie is is driving and Aaron recommended she keep on.
Uh.
Recording the news.
You should forward me to that. That we'll discuss that, that is not in keeping with our policy, we will s- we'll make that work, we understand, absolutely. Um, let's begin with any uh modifications to the agenda. Hearing none, we'll continue with the agenda, that brings us to agenda item uh three point one, which is public comment period, and I believe we have someone who has signed up.
Yes. And it's a, Katie Burksman?
Yeah.
Yes. And forgive me, I if I mispronounce it, which I probably will. Yar Yar Yoi, oh zoomi, yes. It's me.
Okay.
Hi, thank you, it's perfect.
Oh.
Uh, so how how do I, I just sit here?
Please.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, thank you. Hello, good evening, esteemed board members. My name is Yar Yoi. And I speak as the founder of the grassroots organization Zero Waste Ethica. In twenty twenty two, I was honored with the nomination for the National Reuse Award. Uh, reuses in the category of activist of the year. For my work for the organization. I am an alumna of Howard University in Washington DC and HBCU. And most importantly, I am a community member. Who raised my son. In the city school district. As a single mother. Uh, from kindergarten to the high school. He is now twenty-three years old, attending the University of Vermont. And is set to graduate in May. Today, I stand before you with optimism and purpose. Eager to discuss transformative initiative. That holds a potential to significantly impact the well-being of our students. The health of our environment. And cost savings. Did you hear this? Cost savings to the district in the long run. Zero Waste Ethica secured six thousand four hundred dollars in funding last spring to replace toxic single-use utensils in use. Uh, in the cafeterias across the school district. We are currently supporting a methodical rollout. At Boiter and LACS, thanks to the wonderful administrative officer, Dan Raymond's support. We are currently supporting, uh, sorry, and we uh we received overwhelming support from staff and students. Even a standing ovation during an educational lunch table we held. Introducing Spork. A type of utensil with a special history attached to it. In a press release approved by. Officer Dan Raymond and the ICSD Communication Team. In November, the district committed to rolling out the Sporks at all schools in the district. With the ultimate goal of replacing all toxic single-use foodware in the ICSD cafeteria with non-toxic reusable alternatives. However, we are facing challenges. This morning I was informed by. Mister Berman, that the rollout of the Sporks, that our organization works so hard. Will take many years to reach all schools. Contrary to our initial understanding of one or two ti- uh year timeline. Recent studies and reports have highlighted the toxicity of single-use foodware, including so-called compostables. Which contain harmful chemicals called PFAS. Associated with various health issues, including autism, cancer, cholesterol, right, high cholesterol levels. And all of those issues. My son had Asperger, it's like a high functioning autism, and we, I struggled raising him. It is disheartening to learn that the district wishes to delay with the rollout of, say, reusable, environmentally safe. Um. Sporks for quote unquote many years. Moreover, a study by the Center for Environmental Health in California indicates that the school districts switching to reusable from single-use can save money. Save money in the long run. It seems counterintuitive for the districts to continue wasting budget. On disposable, where reusable offer both economic and environmental and health benefits. Additionally, during our our past meeting, uh, at Dan Raymond. Mister Dan Raymond kindly, and he's a wonderful person, and I love him very much, and um. Mentioned having enough budget. To fund dishwasher for all schools. So. I am here to seek the support of the school board members for this positive and necessary initiative. I urge the district administration to swiftly move towards reusable with sensible rollout plans. Education and communication campaigns. Because the loss is a major issue. Uh, some of the students growing the COVID period do not know reusable, they, and so. So we need to have a very good education campaigns and um. Uh, communication campaigns and reasonable, I say reasonable timelines for implementation at all schools. We believe in the power of sustainable practices, and this initiative aligns with the district's visions for a healthier, more environmentally conscious community. While the rollout of this program has faced challenges, we are grateful for the ongoing support from the community. Despite hurdles and valuable lessons learned, we have garnered overwhelming support from students, parents, staff members. Who are eager to contribute to this positive change. I believe in the power of collaboration, and I'm here to seek your endorsement and encouragement for this common sense initiative. And that has the potential to set a precedent for sustainable practice in our school district. Thank you for your time and consideration, and open for any questions and discussions you may have on this matter. Please feel free to reach out, info@zero-waste-ethica.org. Together, we can make a lasting impact on the future and health of our students and our community. Thank you very much, and happy holidays.
I don't believe anybody else has signed up for this evening.
No.
Um, which leads us to board responses.
So Dan, what's the problem?
We, we, right, right now, we're rolling it out in some of our schools, not all our schools have dishwashers. So we would have to, and we're thinking of, you know, we're working towards um upgrading. Planning for electrical inventing, have dishwashers in our buildings, but that's going to take a little bit of time. Right now, we have. Uh, four campuses that have dishwashers, those are campuses that we can, we we can. Move towards rolling out additional two. We did also contact the health department. To see if we can use tablets, um, at some of our smart schools, but they said no, um, so we, so that, that.
Disinfect.
Yeah, 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 like um, like um. Tablets you put in a tray and you soak the utensils, we did explore that option. Uh, right now, we're able to probably bring two more other schools online, say, of dishwashers. Figuring out their, the space in the dishwasher, but paths that uh we're going to need to plan. With uh food service and um. Look at some more long-term planning. The venting for the, the dishwashers in the schools is fairly complicated. Because of the code, I think Chris could probably speak to that. If you guys have questions about that, it's, it's not as easy as just purchasing a dishwasher. It, um, some of our buildings uh need some electrical upgrades and. You'd have to look at that, but also look at the code compliant venting as well.
But Dan, I heard you say this is a capital improvement project that we should consider along with the capital project that's on your agenda.
Oh, yeah, it is. I, I, that's right, I also, I, I forgot, I forgot, I said that also, yes.
I'm sorry, Chris, did you want to speak? I didn't want to.
No, just uh, Dan spoke well to it, um, there are, we've uh attempted to improve um some equipment in. Like the Boiten kitchen, uh, in, in alignment with the chef and recommendations. And we did run into infrastructure limitations there, so we're redoing electrical work, and so that's something that we're going to be looking at, we've actually. Started thinking about looking kitchen by kitchen and, and just doing an assessment of what equipment is desired, what's the existing capacity? And how does that match up, and what do we need to do to get where we need to go? The venting is also incredibly complicated, there's a pain, you gotta go through the group or through a wall or some, so there are some, yeah, there are some considerations there, so.
Jill, is that it? Or should this be on the facilities agenda?
I was just going to say that.
Sorry, Jill.
Um, let's take this up at facilities, I think we'd all like to see more sustainable practices, and we'd also like to. Keep our students healthy by not giving them journey sporks, so let's move forward. And uh, talk about it soon, see how we can move forward on it, but thank you.
Well, pardon me, I hear our next conversation, so thank you for coming to speak to us as well, um, and for raising the issue and for the continued advocacy. We will put it on the facilities agenda for January, which I want to say is January second or third, can't be the second, so maybe it's later. It's the night, so we'll follow up with the exact date, and if you would be willing to share your comments with the board clerk. We'll make sure that all board members receive a copy of your comments as well. Any additional board responses?
Oh, I just would like to thank Yar Yoi, because I know her from BJM days, uh, she'll go into school together. And thank her for her continued activism within the school district and the whole community. Several community members are taking note of this, that even if your student graduates, you can continue being actively involved, because this is our community, so thank you very much. Thank you so much, and I'm going to. You're wonderful, and thank you for having me.
Yeah, hi Dad, I, I heard from some, some middle school students who were excited about this happening, so appreciate it as well.
So, thank you, thank you board members, and thank you, Joe. Uh, that brings us to agenda item three point three, our student reps. Good to see you the week of a break, we are impressed by your commitment, this is fantastic. I think high school, fifth high school first last time, so why don't we start with LACS?
Sure, uh, I'm excited to announce we have our annual solstice lunch this Thursday. It uh used to be a pasta dinner, but now it's been ratified this year, so our whole school gathers in the gym for lunch. And family groups plan meals or cook them and bring food in to share as a community.
Yeah, um, and you mentioned this at the last meeting about how um we have received the, the fire codes from Dr. Brown, um. But they seem to only be in regards to egress doors, and we didn't really hear much about that from that, um, so would love to hear um. Anything about that, about what, if there's a, if we're misinterpreting the code, or if there's another code that. We haven't seen that applies to. So.
LACS, fifth high school.
Yeah, um, we were super excited to participate in the conversations during the curriculum meeting about um tennis-based grading. And we hope to continue having productive dialogue about these changes going into the future. Uh, we haven't been able to meet with Mr. Trumbull since our last meeting, unfortunately, so we'll keep today short. Um, in terms of school events, the orchestra concert happened last Wednesday and went excellently, the choir concert is happening today. Uh, at seven thirty, and that's where Kaden is right now. Um, and also the key club uh held a blood drive today in collaboration with the Red Cross, um, which I hear went very excellently, uh, many students showed up to donate blood.
And there will also be a Jasmine concert tomorrow evening next up. Um, it's called auditorium. Uh, we appreciate the discussion of standard-based grading at the curriculum committee meeting. I would like to mention that IHS also has plans, or at least ideas, on implementing that kind of grading at the high school level. And some classes have already implemented standard-based grade. We hope to be reaching out to the teachers at the high schools who are working. We have a new update on the food drive we mentioned last week. So following the end of the drive and receiving donations, everything was collected and compiled into holiday food baskets and delivered to fifteen families after school day. Um, and I think that's pretty much all we have, that because technically we've been a test suite for the students at IHS. The teachers giving us last-minute assessments left and right, so they're all ready to dive in to restful winter.
Thank you. Board responses? And we'll assume that Dr. Brown or most likely Dr. Brian will respond back about the part of this order as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, good folks, we'll continue on with our agenda. Uh, that brings us to our consent agenda. We'll entertain.
Motion to approve all consent agenda items listed as in consent agenda, consideration of accounts, personnel report. Students and minutes of previous meeting as presented, second.
Moved by Jill, second by Adam, discussion. Can I ask for a point of clarification under our consent agenda? Can we speak briefly to the northeast, uh, not, excuse me, not the northeast capital outbreak project? Uh, I am missing some. Maybe it is.
What do you mean, mechanical contract?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
We've heard that. How did I miss?
The very last one, it should be called mechanical contract, not HPA.
Go, yeah.
Um.
Agenda item five point one one, or five point eleven for whatever followed off.
Absolutely, so last week, sorry everybody, I'm a line behind you. Um. Last week, when you met, we brought you most of um the contracts that were being forwarded from the bid process. Um, that had already been vetted after they submitted their bids, so it's called the de-scope process. At that meeting, I had mentioned that there were still a few that were um still in the process of being looked at. Um, due to the fact that the lowest bidder withdrew their bid, and so we had to go to the second bidder, this is this um mechanical contract that I was speaking to. Um, and so um this was properly, you know, vetted on a set of campus construction, they went through all the pieces. And this is the recommendation that they're bringing forward to you. And again, this is for three D one, right, so this is the major work at the high school, including connection, like sort of doing the STEM project. Uh, those are the major pieces of this mechanical contract at ours.
Thank you, great, I wanted to make sure board members were aware if they had any questions for forty. Hearing none, and I apologize, I think I'm not seeing anything from Eldred or Aaron as well, we'll call the question. Um, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda? Uh. Excitingly includes Katie as well, we'll thank Katie, thank you all very much. Uh, we will continue on, uh, and that brings us to the superintendent report, Dr. Brown.
Good, thank you for the opportunity, and thank y'all for being here. Uh, two quick items, uh, one is a response. Um, and you know, first, uh, thank you for your continued advocacy, uh, your activism for the community member as well. Um, in the words of my daughter, please keep that same energy, we need it. Uh, we need it on sporks, we need it on fire code violations, we need it on literacy instruction, grade, tennis-based grading, we need it. Um, from everyone, so thank you for bringing those questions to us. Uh, as a quick response, you know, we, we have connected with the fire inspector himself. Uh, got very technical information that I wish to share with y'all, and I apologize for reading, but uh. An egress door, an egress door is defined as any door you walk through to get to a space. So, this rule was created, this law was created so that first responders, fire responders could have access in an emergency to any space. And every door that has been inspected in any one of our building, particularly in your building, is considered an egress door. Now, I even tried to think about which questions you would ask next, next, I can't think of what you would ask next, all right? That's coming from the fire inspector, so please, if there are additional questions or clarif- clarifying information you wish to have, please. Surprise me with the question, because I want to take it back as well, but I think this clarified, we ran into our architects. Um, the great local doctor Brian in there, and everyone else you can think of, because I was somewhat nervous about coming before you again. And sharing the same information. It doesn't happen, all right? I think. Uh, second item, uh, you know, if folks are looking for something to read over the holiday break, or the winter break. I have something for you, uh, if you only can help me, the in, the insider was lost today. The most recent version of the insider, we've used the insider this year to highlight our commitment. And our focus on learning for the ICSD, and if you look at it, you will see artifacts and examples of teaching and learning that's happening in our spaces. And this year, we're focusing in on the academic excellence, and some folks call that rigor, but the high levels of excellence that our district has been known for. And how we're providing that excellence to everyone in our school that do. And you'll see, uh, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna drag this out a little while, so let me just show you all some of the examples here, but uh. Check out the article, uh, where I know people that did, did a mule, part of us gone students at Florida University. Um, to create a mule, we were here as part of our capital project work going forward at Fall Creek Elementary School, where they designed playgrounds that I want to play on. Um, oh, we, we launched a new series where we are partnering with students, um, they are interviewing me, and I gotta tell you, I, I show up and they ask the artist question, just like y'all do. Um, Kyle, a fifth grader at Fall Creek, really pushed me, he pushed my knowledge on comic books, most importantly. Um, and when we were going to be implementing comic books and using comic books in our learning spaces, um, it's wrapped novels, the way, which he likes to learn. Uh, so anyway, if you can check out our insider, if you're looking for something to read next week and going forward. And thanks to our communications team who's doing an excellent job curating the content, it's not easy to do this, and I think they've done an excellent job. Thank you for the opportunity, brother.
Exactly.
Yeah, thanks.
We will continue on with our agenda, this brings us to agenda item uh nine point one, which is the capital projects resolution. Uh, for board members, there are a, a couple of resolutions that are listed. As we proceed, we should talk about process in terms of following Robert's rules of order. And by that, I mean you will see um three options, options A, option B, or option C. At any point in times that any of those options receive a majority vote. The other two options are no longer available for discussion or vote this evening. So, just in terms of our conversations, in terms of process, I want to make sure that, that folks understand how um we should proceed. Uh, we can entertain motions, or we can um move in a little bit more of a non-traditional way and engage in some dialogue before we entertain motions as well as. I am looking for uh what would be best for the board to do.
Does it make sense to start with a higher number or work down, or the other way around? I think it would be a higher and go down, okay.
Feel free to put a motion on the table, Derek, we can.
I, I moved to start with higher numbers and work our way down, because presumably those who would approve a higher number would approve a lower number, but not necessarily the other way around.
Do you want to make an official motion here?
I know that, yeah.
The wording is here.
Oh, uh.
Yeah, where, my wording.
Under nine, school district business recommended action, I'll perish.
Motion to approve Ethica City School District's plans to undertake engineering, economic, and now feasibility studies. Together with preliminary planning, the budgetary processes, in connection with a future ten-year district-wide capital improvement project. And thank you to the primary.
A second, sir.
Uh, moved by Eric, seconded by Adam, and for the higher number, I presume the three numbers that are listed. That you'd be talking about option C. For a hundred and twenty-five million dollars over a ten-year span, if that is correct, is that high point for, yes. Uh, debate, discussion, dialogue, questions. We, yes, we did get a second, and we do have uh folks here to answer any questions for us, to the board. And that includes uh folks online, if you can hear us as well, please feel free to. Make a hand motion or use the raise hand. I can give my talk on silences, put it up to awards. Mora?
Well, yes, I will just say that for the public, I think that all members of the board are quite aware that. This has been discussed at multiple meetings, that um in the agenda, we have documents. Uh, we have the fiscal advisor's presentation from our meeting of, of November sixteen. We have uh recording of the joint facilities and finance work session there, which provides abundant information. Um, and I, so I would just urge anybody in the public who has questions, needs more information, to take lots of those documents.
Thank you for that, Mora, and I'd also say, no matter which of the options we would approve this evening. There will be additional information on our school district website that includes all of this as well, so folks can continue to ask questions.
Can I just?
Any other?
Can folks hear me? Uh, yeah, can folks hear me? All right, so. I just want to.
Mr. Harris, can I hear you move on? I don't know if that's on our end or your end.
Hello?
Still cannot hear you.
Then I don't know what's up, because I'm unmuted on my end.
There we go.
Try it again now, hello?
Hello, folks?
Emily's on the way, I'm gonna help in just a second.
Speak again.
Hi. Apparently Katie can hear me. And she's the only one to hear me well, and Aaron, so my online participants can hear me.
And Eldred, I'll just.
I guess.
Yeah, Eldred, we're waiting for some uh technological help, hopefully it will be quick.
All right, I'll see if I can type it in before you guys get that result out.
Eldred and Katie, can you hear me?
You'll hear each other, we're not hearing you.
Is it working?
No.
No, we need you, though. Go, go, baby.
I don't know what to do with the background. The volume is all the way up.
Yeah, no, you, we've got something. The only other option would be from your computer, if you're putting. Put your settings, video settings, and do it, and connect it to your computer. Put it on audio.
So, so the turkey is going to be.
Emily, what are you seriously going to do now?
No.
I'll try to talk to you guys that quiet, I don't want to.
Yep. Eldred, you can try again, we're going to try to be quiet here, maybe, I'm gonna, we'll put you back on mute and we'll re- 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 say it.
I was working the table for.
Hold on one second, I'm trying. All right, how's that? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, I basically wanted to simplify what we're doing for the public. Using uh Aaron's brilliant formula from the last finance committee meeting. We are, at the group, sending out a hundred and twenty-five million dollars into the ether. Which will be paid back over time, over the course of, we will expend it and pay it back over the course of time. This is not coming fully out of our budget, we will be paying basically um the interest on this amount. And the one hundred and twenty-five breaks down simply as follows. Forty million dollars will go to the creation of a new bus garage. Given our uh electric vehicles of the horizon, that's prudent. The remainder of the money, eighty million roughly, we spent ten million dollars over that ten-year period on various projects. As prioritized by the state. And our own internal um uh maintenance and facility people. Uh, hopefully that helps simplify it. We are not taking one hundred and twenty-five million dollars, million dollars out of our budget to do these projects. That is just not how this works, thank you.
Right, so you'd say is that if we, we go with a hundred and twenty-five million, forty million of that goes for a new bus garage building and other things related to, uh, the bus transportation. Um, and that we're not taking money out of our general fund, our budget, we're borrowing the money. Um, and so we would be paying interest on it over time. What he didn't say, I think it's really important, is we're not gonna immediately go borrow a hundred and twenty-five million. We're going to borrow it in stages. Um, and every step of the way, the board has to approve the, uh, what we're going to borrow. So that enables us to have, um, the authorization, so it's basically a credit line from the public, authorization for a credit line from the public, up to and not a dollar more than a hundred and twenty-five million or whatever figure we approve and put before voters, cuz the voters also have to approve it before we borrow a dime. Um, and this enables us to be flexible in changing circumstances. Uh, that if, if things change radically, we don't have to borrow any or, or certainly not all of that money. And it will keep our debt service steady as it has been, as seventy percent of our budget. Seven, yeah, sorry, seven percent of our budget, uh, each year for debt service.
The only thing I would add to what was being said is that the forty million dollars for transportation upgrades would allow us to do a key thing, which is electrifying our bus fleet completely. Uh, and significant upgrades, I think we keep talking about the year that the bus garage was built, come that year again, is it fifty-seven?
Sixty.
Sixty, so, something like that, right? So we're talking about a sixty-two-year-old building trying to be in a modern era. Um, and it would allow the district, as Moira said, to keep our debt served at seven percent, which would allow us the ability for long-term financial planning and other areas as well. So, these are all, um, factoids that are important for us to mention this evening, but have also been repeated in other meetings, and I would encourage our community to take a look at, uh, any number of board meetings and finance and facilities committee meetings to get additional information as well.
Should we remind the public of the state contributions?
Yes, it'd be very important, please.
I, I, I would defer to the expert.
So, um, every time we borrow funds for capital projects that fall within our maximum cost allowance for building, right, for the state set the threshold of how much money you can spend at each campus, um, that's a, that's a rolling number. Um, we track that very closely. And so right now, our building aid, if we do capital projects that fall within that cost allowance, our building aid currently is fifty-eight percent, uh, fifty-eight cents on the dollar. Um, and that fluctuates here or there, every year might be a penny more, penny less, something like that. We've never really gotten above sixty. Uh, we've never really been below fifty-six that I can remember, um, so that is, that is just where we are. Which means that for every dollar spent, over the course of, uh, a timeframe, usually it's fifteen years, that's when aid flows back to the districts, you get fifty-eight cents for every dollar that you spend, right? So, so that's how that works. And so it's part of our revenue. When you look at, um, our revenue report, when we put our budget together, the building aid line is all of our prior debt service work that we've done, that money coming back to us for that year, um, over that, on that fifteen-year schedule.
Yes.
Question, point of clarification in the motion, it refers to planning, budgetary processes, um, feasibility studies, engineering, it doesn't say anything about construction.
Seeker is a design-related, um, fashion. So it, it addresses the design phase, um, and so when you construct under that approved, uh, project, then you are building under that seeker.
And Jill, if things were to change, and it was to impact, and we noticed that through the design development phase, that it would be more than a type two, that there would be impact, we would have to come down to the public, to the board, right, and alert and have, um, a new, uh, ref- you know, um, public support or correction.
But I guess that we're voting to approve a seeker.
That is required by law, that's one.
Right.
What, that essentially begins the process of the design development phase.
Is there any expectation or hope that forty million plus will provide us with a new bus garage? And electric buses? In reality?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's what, because I think we've all been assuming that this translates into bricks and mortar. Not just feasibility study, but, okay, alright, okay, thank you. The motion sort of leaves that a little.
And then each phase, or each project will come back to the board, like it was on the meeting to either approve the bid and or the planning and processing. So I wanna remind the public, even if the board were to approve the possibility of a hundred and twenty-five million dollar capital project, the board is not required to spend that. Uh, it could be far less than that, depending on the products that needed, and in particular, our deferred maintenance. And we'd ask the board to take a look at our, I still call it the building condition survey, I know it's changed names. Uh, but to make sure that, you know, we have a number of projects that will need, including things like venting and electrical work for pigeons, uh, and additional items like that. Additional questions or comments from board members? Fantastic. I will call the question, and I want to remind board members, if this receives majority vote, then we do not have anything to follow to, just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. Be clear, this is option C, or this is option C, a hundred and twenty-five million that you have put forward, and the second by Adam.
Yes.
Fantastic. We will call the question. All board members in favor? All opposed? The motion passes. Thank you all for your great work, and we look forward to the work ahead, which means that we're just beginning this process. There's plenty of work ahead. Uh, that will bring us to Agenda Item nine point two, policy eighty, can't read from the left, my policy's at eighty-one thirty point two? Eighty-one thirty point two Workplace Violence Prevention for a Second Reading and Adoption this evening. We will entertain motions, and then we'll be up for discussion.
Motion to approve policy eighty-one thirty point two for second reading and adoption.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Adam. Uh, do you care to speak to this, this topic? You've been working on this.
I would be happy to, if you'd like yourself.
Uh, please, briefly.
Alright, so, uh, the Workplace Violence Prevention Act, signed into law by, uh, by Governor Fogle on November sixth. Previously, it's now by the district or public. But with through advocacy, through state unit of teachers, school-related potential harm, um, it is now, now impacts schools and. Um, the intention of the law is to create systems and structures to prevent and respond to workplace violence. Originally introduced into five steps, unfortunately during a rise in, um, workplace assault and homicide. And so you may hear about disgruntled postal workers or shipping folks, right, so that's sort of what it was initially intended, um, to be. Um, and now that it applies to school, we've been working really hard with our union colleagues to ensure that we're both protecting our staff and our students, right? We don't believe that there is a, any sort of binary here, right? This is a worker-centric law, and we have the responsibility to mitigate students. And so we're talking a lot about how to evoke the. But it requires the law, um, it requires a policy, which is what we declare, that has to be in place by January fourth of twenty twenty-four. Um, there is a program component that's required, training components that's required, a risk analysis and mitigation strategy analysis, and, um, and also required that we engage in annual review and collaboration and making partnerships. Um, we're a really great group of folks, uh, and, uh, and, uh, and we've been doing this work, um, for the last couple of weeks. And, um, certainly anticipate that we'll come back to this, um, and bring it back to policy for further review and further revision. We wanted to make sure that it's in place by four.
Questions, discussion, clarifications?
You know, we had good discussion about this policy at, uh, the policy committee meeting twice, I guess, we talked about it there, and I'm, you know, very happy with, uh, where it stands now, after some revisions. Thank you.
There are no additional questions or comments? We'll call the question. All in favor of adopt, of a, for a second reading and adopting this evening? That is unanimous, which I've been calling universal. Uh, we will move to Agenda Item nine point three, which is the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Academic Calendar Shift. I know this topic came to us last week to have a conversation that this may be coming our way. Um, is this something that you're gonna be wanting us to vote on this evening?
You don't have to, it's not imminent, uh, but we wanted to put it on a document.
Fantastic. We speak to it no longer take.
So, uh, as I mentioned last time, our last meeting, we have instituted a caregiver conference day at our, to middle school, Boynton and Duett. Pretty cool. We used to have, you know, we had full-day conferences at elementary, where we had no formalized time for educators to meet with caregivers, basically, yes. Right, um, at middle school, so this was a really great shift, really innovative shift, um. Where we worked closely with, uh, listening to families and especially to educators, um, and proposed a shift to have it match the day in March, uh, when we have elementary caregiver conference dates, uh, we will still be okay with our hours for date, um, by, you know, sort of the tip of our teeth. But, uh, I think it's worthwhile, um, and it's made to have a longer block of time for educators to engage with families for a longer periods of time or months.
Um, I'm looking at the draft, and it shows March fourteenth as elementary Boynton and Duett caregiver conference day, but it also still says February seventh for the Boynton and Duett.
Oh, apologies. Thank you, good catch.
It doesn't have the symbol on it, but it does have the wording.
Thank you.
And suggestions, so that we can be consistent with, um, other calendar approvals the board have done this year. Uh, we can, if, given the nod of okay or approval from the board tonight, without a vote, we can put it on our website, communicate out why and what we're proposing, have folks come to the next meeting, with any comments, or provide it to us via Let's Talk. And then we ask the board to vote officially in January.
I think that's a, a good approach, I appreciate, I think that's a solid recommendation. There'll be board members of other thoughts about that. Then we start communicating now, and then we'll take an official action in January. Thank you, and thank you for the collaboration. I know there's been a lot of feedback and trying to pay attention to how folks are, uh, making this work in a worthwhile way. So great, I appreciate all the, the work, so. Uh, it was listed as discussion item, possible action item. We're going to, uh, a committee will table it. That works, but we'll take some action in that regard, if that is okay. Fantastic. Keeping the agenda moving, that brings us to Agenda Item nine point four, Resolution to Approve the Expenditure for Board Members to Attend the T S T S B A, N I S B A, C N S Y V A Advocacy Event. We probably are missing a couple of acronyms, but we'll keep it moving, um, and it's for, uh, Garrett, Eldred, and Moira. Um, we should ask now, before we vote, if there are any other additional board members who may wanna participate, we've done this in the past as well. Uh, but that's who's listed here to participate in this event. Attain motions.
Motion to approve expenditure for attendance at the T S T S B A, N Y S S B A, and C N Y, S B A Advocacy with Impact Event on January fourth, twenty twenty-four. For the following board members, Garrett Lailock, Eldred Harris, and Ray Relane.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Adam. A discussion, questions, conversation?
We quiz the academic when we get back.
Fantastic. We'll call the question. All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, did I see that correctly? I apologize. Um, and that brings us to our next agenda item, which is nine point five, which is committee updates. And we'll go in order listed here. We'll begin with Facilities and Dr. Tripp.
I'm delighted, uh, to report that I won't be extending the meeting at all, talking about this tonight. Our most recent Facilities Committee was canceled due to lack of a quora, but we're eager to meet in January.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Plenty of work to do.
Yes, we do.
Five minutes. Uh, Mr. Harris is no longer with us. I'll assume that that meeting was also canceled, where. Mr. Harris, will you provide us with a committee update for finance?
We basically reviewed the content of our last meeting and gave people opportunity to ask any more questions before tonight's vote on the three bond measures. We really didn't do anything new or exciting.
I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we agreed to have a, we did a little bit of dive into healthcare, and we agreed to have another meeting to really look closely at healthcare.
Or, um, be burnt throughout the district, or was that for? When you say healthcare this year, so we've had a lot of conversations about retiring healthcare.
Uh, all, all the healthcare. Turns out be, um, yeah, it is very complicated.
Yes, that is, that, that, thanks, Gary, that's correct. We agreed to agree to do a much deeper dive into the costs our, our community pays, what they get for that. Is it wise to try and build new relationships with physicians in town? All of the above, huh? So I look forward to that, forward to breaking that down and going deeper into those, uh, discussions. Thanks.
And that's where Garrett graciously volunteered.
Um, tonight, this will also be a good time to let our community know that our communication team does a great job of putting out committee summaries of every committee that happens. You can find it on the website, which you can find additional information for anyone's, if you're, above and beyond the summaries that are provided to you, so hope you're.
And for our next finance committee, we, you know, have a, um, that's a come, to Jay Franklin, to come to the meeting to go through.
We have a big enough room for that. Thank you for reminding us that, that's important, yes, that is important. Well, that agenda will be out shortly. Um, we'll look for our curriculum update on.
Yes, a lot of exciting things are happening in curriculum, um, but the main thing we're talking about uh, tonight is kind of a, a review of some of the, uh, initiatives and curriculum that happened over the last, uh, five years. And then talking about selecting a, uh, curriculum for literacy, uh, for some different bands in elementary school mostly. Some of the different options that are out there, and then the ways in which teachers have been engaged as part of that process to to review those options and have feedback, um, and a timeline for accepting, uh, curriculum.
Thank you very much. Uh, policy update.
Okay, well, at the last meeting, or it looks like present, the last full board meeting, rather, uh, the, uh, policy nine one one zero point three, uh, policy against discrimination, uh, and harassment of employees was, that was adopted, um, after a second reading. Um, we've got, and tonight, uh, I think we're paying attention, we passed another policy, workplace violence, that, uh, um, for a second reading and adoption, so we adopted that. Uh, we've got a couple of policies that we have. Um, we've got a couple policies that we have done some work on, and they'll be coming back. To the policy committee at the next meeting, which is December fifth. Uh, including the pre-K enrollment, am I correct about that, um, policy? And the, uh, policy for disposition of unneeded property. Uh, and then moving forward, we're going to be looking at more at policies in the nine thousand series, which the title of that is Personnel and Negotiations. And, uh, tonight, there was some hint at possibly looking at our policy on curriculum. Uh, and potentially having a joint meeting of the curriculum committee and the policy committee.
One point clarification, uh, Tricia, the next policy committee meeting is.
Oh, sorry, I said December fifth, that was the last meeting, January ninth, yeah. Oh.
Thank you, Moira, and Moira, back to you, a human resource committee.
So, we had a meeting on December fifth, and our next meeting will be January ninth. Uh, at the last minute, we heard from several teachers who have been teaching extra classes. About the challenges that are involved in doing so. Uh, we looked at a draft of, uh, uh, teaching assistant job, um. Description, because we were talking about proposing, uh, changing the. Uh, requirements, the educational requirement for the teaching assistant role, and we talked a lot about what that is. Um, so that will be coming back to us with some revisions. And we had a really informative presentation by Zach at Lind and Gravira from H R. We had a presentation and a very interesting discussion. About the salary and premium benefits structure for all, um, I C S D employees, and so at the last meeting. Uh, there was a document in the agenda that, uh, was presented to us, and we looked at that and discussed it in quite a bit of depth.
Thank you very much. Uh, those are the committee updates, and again, a reminder to the community that you can take a look at the summaries. That you can find on our website, for additional information, please do join us at, uh, committee meetings, it is a. A much better time for us to engage in dialogue than the board meetings, we'll care about the business of the school boards, so. We encourage active participation. Um, with that, our next agenda item is agenda item number ten, other, or discussion items or business items. Do any board members have anything they want to put on, uh, this or a future agenda? Yes, the issue potentials we will follow, but that is coming from the curriculum committee recommendation. We'll connect and make sure that is, we'll discuss during, we'll welcome the meeting as well. All right, we have upcoming dates of portions that are listed, we have meetings coming up next month after the break. And if there is no other business, I am very pleased to say, I hope you all have a restorative break. And we will see you after the new year, not before. Fantastic, we have a good deal. Is it a reference? No.